Meeting of the Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:01 PM, Tuesday, January 12th, 2021, virtually, in room 137 of the Edison Building, with participants participating electronically in accordance with Minnesota Statute 13D.021 until further notice. Members of the public are currently not permitted to attend these meetings physically due to COVID-19 pandemic recommendations. Interested members, the public are welcome and encouraged to view this meeting remotely at youtube.com/ISD535 where the livestream video may be found. And for those of you participating and viewing, please disconnect the invitation for the next session and stay on this link for our next team's meeting. Finally, we acknowledge that our PS sites are situated on ancestral lands of the Dakota People. We acknowledge and honor the Dakota Nations and the sacred land of all indigenous peoples. Present at this meeting is our school board members and Superintendent Mr. Michael Munoz. Ms. Severson, would you please call the roll?
Thank you Chair Marvin. Kirk Amundson. Director Barlow.
Here.
Director Garcia.
Here.
Director McGlaughlin.
Here.
Chair Marvin.
Here.
Vice Chair Nathan.
Here.
Treasurer Workman.
Here.
Thank you.
I think I'm unmuted now, right? No? Yes? Good? Okay, thank you. 2.01 approval of agenda, are there any changes?
There are no changes to the agenda.
Move approval, Workman.
It's been moved by Amundson and seconded by Workman for approval. Ms. Severson will call vote.
Thank you Kirk Amundson.
Aye.
Director Barlow.
Aye.
Director Garcia.
Aye.
Chair Marvin.
Aye.
Director McGlaughlin.
Aye.
Vice Chair Nathan.
Aye.
Thank you Treasurer Workman.
Aye.
Thank you.
Before we move on to the rest of the meeting, I'd like to read a brief statement for board members and for those who may be watching at home. And this comes from the school board. In recent weeks, the school board has received considerable input from parents, staff, students, and community members in the form of emails, phone calls, and social media posts. One lesson the board has learned, our residents care deeply about education. And they have very different perspectives about how our schools should operate during a pandemic. It's been interesting and useful to consider so many different viewpoints coming from our constituents. Another message was this to the board. Listen more, tell us what the plan is, tell us how you make decisions. That message is also useful because the board can do better with communication, and we are committed to that. We are beginning with a virtual listening session this Thursday evening from 6 o'clock to 7 o'clock. We know this won't satisfy everyone's need to be heard, but it may be a step toward providing people who prefer not to email or call a way to express their ideas to the board. We also need to ensure folks that although all seven board members receive and read emails, one board member, usually the chair, is designated to respond on behalf of all. In terms of the plan, the Phase 4 learning model has been released to families and staff, and it has been posted on the district website. At the January 19th meeting, the superintendent will present a plan for the middle and high school learning model, as well as the metrics that will be used to determine when to move ahead to implementation. At the February 2nd meeting, the board will review the most recent numbers on COVID on our community, in our community, and discuss if and when to return to in-person learning for our elementary and hybrid for secondary. As you know, we are beginning to return our elementary students to hybrid starting next Tuesday. In terms of decision-making, by law, board members can only meet to discuss and vote at planned, open board meetings. We do most of our study between meetings. We go through an extraordinary amount of information and data that are generated at the national, state, county, and district levels. We work with healthcare experts and get the latest meetings from experts at Mayo Clinic and Olmsted County Health Department. And we get daily input from community members. The data we use to inform our decision-making is already available to the public, but we will make it easier for everyone to access, and we will do a better job of clarifying the data we use and the criteria we use in decision-making. During a pandemic, there are obviously a number of variables that cannot be controlled, and we cannot promise that changes won't have to be made. But our goal continues to be to get all our children back into schools in an environment that is safe and welcoming. Thank you. 7.0 Efficient and Effective Operations, 7.1 Five-Year General Fund Financial Forecast. This is an information item, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, John Carlson, Executive Director, Finance, will provide this information for tonight. John?
All right, good evening, school board. Chair Marvin, Superintendent Munoz. Just trying to make sure I've got all my screens in the right spot, okay. As the title slide indicates here, we made this forecast for you in December, and there's been a couple updates that I found out even as recently as 5:03 PM tonight, so I'll insert those when appropriate. All right, so first off, the five-year forecast, we generally do this twice a year for you. We give you a forecast in the winter, and we adjust for any enrollment and staffing changes that we know of, we adjust for any local revenue changes, and we incorporate budget adjustments through October 31st. In the springtime, so by the way, this is the winter forecast, so in the springtime, we'll do another one for you right around budget setting time. If we have any employee or employment settled contracts that might affect the forecast, we'll put that data in at that time. We'll adjust for anything we know about the state budget at that point, anything we have learned, and we'll also adjust for budget adjustments through March 31st at that time. And we'll also give you what it will look like if you approve the budget that's being proposed to you at that time, and how that will play out in the forecast. As part of any forecast, there's always a set of assumptions that go into making a forecast. A forecast is an estimate, it contains many different variables that, again, we're using our professional judgment to make an estimate for you, and giving our best guess based on history, based on what we know, and so on. Right now, we're assuming that the state legislature will likely be able to give us an increase of about 1% next school year and 1% the school year after that. Normally, if you've been around and watched these before, you know that we've done 2% estimates. Being that the state was in a projected deficit, we decided to scale back and go with a 1% estimate. In our further out years, we've gone back to a 2% estimate, so the 1% we used for next school year and the school year after that. We assume that the voter-approved referendum will stay in place, that's $781.19, and we're going to talk to you about that in a little bit. We're eligible to increase that up to $1,827 per student if the voters did that, if you put a question out there for them to look at. And again, we're going to talk to you about that in a moment here. We assume that local optional revenue, which is school board basically-approved referendum of $724, that you'll continue to accept that, and that will be part of the budget going forward. And then we assume any restricted funding such as grants or donations will cover the expenditures associated with them. On the expenditure side, some of the assumptions that we make are related to salaries and benefits, that's our biggest spending area, because we are a people-intensive organization, so we're estimating that the increases in salaries and benefits would be 2.5% going forward. We do have teachers' contract that needs to be renegotiated along with principals for next school year, so again, we're assuming that we can be at or below that, but that won't be known until we actually get to negotiations and we sit down and we try to work that out. We do assume that there would be a reduction in general education positions next year, and that's basically because we have less students this year than we did last year. And really, we're going to staff when we get to that here in a month or so, we're going to staff for next year based on the number of students that are enrolled. And so, the way it's looking right now is there would be a reduction in some general ed positions. We are assuming an increase in special ed positions. We have noticed year over year that we tend to grow in our special education and the number of IEPs that we need to respond to. We do assume new staffing in the forecast in the '22-23 school year, that's related to opening up two brand-new schools that haven't been staffed before, along with increasing the size at Longfellow and Bishop. We're estimating 3% increases for contracted services, so that's like our bus service contract, our utilities, supplies, and technology, things like that. And then any debt that we pay out of the general fund, we assume that at the actual cost based on the debt schedule. I just wanted to show you, this is the last five years of actual real results, and it's very simplified, our budget is, you know, 18,000 line items, and we're making it into about two lines here. But basically, the revenues is the top line, the expenditures is the bottom line. Revenues, we were bringing in less than what we were spending through '16-'17 school year, so you can see in '16-'17, our revenue was $214 million, but we actually spent $216 million that year. The third line there is the unassigned fund balance, so that's the amount of money that we have in reserve to cover shortfalls in future years or to do strategic things. It provides cash flow, so we can always assure that we can make payroll even if the state is having budget challenges. That was at $15.4 million at the end of the '16-'17 year, which represented 7.1% of the budget, so you just take 15.4 divided by 216.5, and it was 7.1%. 7.1% means that we had generally about less than a month worth of reserve. So if you think of a month's worth of spending as about 8.3% of the budget, we had three weeks or so of reserves. So in other words, if no money came in the door, we'd be able to make it about three weeks without having to go out and look for money somewhere. Starting in the '17-'18 year, we started staffing a little bit tighter, we've been more careful, we've been applying a standardized budget allocation guide to make sure that we spend less than what we bring in as revenue. And so we've actually added to our savings account, our reserve, for the last three school years in a row, and now our unassigned fund balance is about 11% of the year's budget. So in other words, we have one and a half months' worth of reserve. So if no money came in for about a month and a half, we would be okay. Jump forward to the current year, revenues are $241.5, and our approved expenditure budget is $256. That $256 million number includes things that we didn't spend last year that we let sites carry over into this year, so that's not because we were bad at budgeting and we're $15 million in the hole. Part of that is assuming we're spending things that were allocated to specific needs or specific projects or to specific sites. And so, that's why the budget looks a little bit higher than what the revenue is. If we spent that fully, we'd be down to $21 million in reserves, 8.2%, that's almost exactly one month of reserve at the end of the school year is what we're projecting. I also would say that that revenue of $241.5 is a little bit lower than what we were expecting when we set out on this school year, that's been adjusted down because of the number of students is 811 less than what we had budgeted for back in May. So if we carry that forward over the next few years, you see a problem here, you see that every year, the expenses are going to be projected higher than what the revenues are. And we can't sustain that long-term. We can sustain that probably one full school year, and our fund balance would be 6.8%, but we'd be right on the line of running down to zero or negative the year after that. And so we don't want to let that happen. The good news is we have time to respond to that. So like I said, this is more than a year out at this point, but it's worthwhile to start having the conversation about what we're going to do in '22-'23 school year to address that. Is that more revenue? Is that less spending? Or a combination of both? I also want to just give you a little historical perspective, I haven't done this before showing you this, but what I'm, this is kind of a busy chart, but what I wanted to kind of get your attention to is for grounding here, the 6%, the orange line straight across, is what board policy is. So you have a school board policy that says, "Don't get below 6%." The blue line shows what the actual percentage of reserve was at the end of each school year. So you can see, we were up here in double digits for a long time, and then we started spending more than what we were bringing in for a few years in a row, and we got as low as 7.1%. And then, as I've said, we've put money into savings or we've put money into reserves the last three school years, so we're now up at that 11% number. The green number here is the average of the forecasts that we gave the school board publicly, the five years preceding each of these year ends. And so you can see, what I'm trying to show you here is that before we get to a school year, we're generally more pessimistic, we're more conservative in what we're estimating, and overall, we're projecting that things will be less good than how they actually end up. And so, you can see, we always beat what the average forecast has been up to that This red is what the forecast was that I gave you in May, and the black is what I'm giving you tonight. So you can already see that we're bending the curve, we're already making progress just in the last six months. We didn't intentionally do anything to make that happen, but we know more. We know more about where we're at today and what's coming down the road, so the forecast starts improving little by little. It doesn't just happen by its own, though, and I guess that's the point I want to make off this whole chart, is we have to make intentional decisions as management, as school board, about how you're going to address it so that we don't get to a point where we're running out of money. So I guess the key points I wanted you to walk away with after seeing the forecast is forecasts are made five years into the future, and a lot changes. We definitely know a lot more about this year than we did six months ago, and that's because we're in this year. We know how many students showed up, we know how many staff we have. So we're more accurate for this year, we're slightly more accurate for next year, hopefully. But there's a lot of variables out there three, four, and five years down the road, because laws will change, hopefully funding will increase, we'll know more about our student counts after the pandemic, so on and so forth. Forecasts are usually negative because they assume the budget is on autopilot, meaning we generally, other than some of the assumptions we've made, we assume that we're just going to keep on doing everything the way we are, we're not going to make any strategic changes either in revenue or expenditures, we're going to keep what we have, minus, you know, maybe adding staff or reducing staff if student counts go up. We've made some of those assumptions in there, but everything else is pretty much on autopilot. That would be irresponsible, just to let the budget be on autopilot. We have to make decisions, day by day, month by month, on what we're going to do going forward. And then tough decisions need to be made about a year to two years ahead of red flags in the forecast, so when I probably talked in May, we were talking about that '21-'22 school year, and it's still looking like it will be a year where we might spend more than what we bring in as revenue. But knowing how we actually finished the school year of 1920, and how much we had in reserve, it's now looking like we probably don't need to go through a dire budget-cutting process this spring for next fall. Meaning, we can probably get through next school year, even if we had to dig into savings, and we'd still would be above school board policy. But what I'm alerting you to at this point is that '22-'23 year is coming, and it's going to be a year from now when we start staffing for it, and we need to be thinking about, are we going to make any changes in '22-'23? Such as going out for a referendum perhaps, making major adjustments to different programs or services or staffing levels that we have, or just, again, lobbying our legislators for additional funding. I also want you to realize that we've assumed 1% now for the next two school years. That might come in better, it might come in worse. The state could say, "We just can't give an increase this year, we're not going to cut you," but you're going to have the same funding per pupil the next couple years because of the situation the state is in. If that happens, then this budget forecast will look a little bit worse. If they happen to come up with 2%, like they have for like the last eight years in a row, then the forecast will look better than what it does. We've also assumed staff pay increases are at 2.5%. That's an estimate we make, that's not a commitment to any of our groups, I just want that to be known. We're not saying that everybody's automatically getting a 2.5% raise, we're using that as an estimate. We still have to sit down and come to the table on both sides and agree upon contracts with our employees. And with teachers and principals coming up, we've got a lot of work to do to mutually come to agreement on that for the next two-year cycle. Again, we've assumed that there will possibly be some general education positions cut this spring, and that's solely based on the numbers of students. If we are still 811 students less than what we thought we were going to be, we have to trim back our staff to match the staff better to the number of students we have. And then we do know for certain that we're opening new schools in the fall of '22, that is going to bring new expense, there's going to be new electricity bills, there's going to be new maintenance positions, there's going to be a couple new principals that need to be hired. I mean, all those things have to be accounted for, and you can't get by with opening a new building without bringing on some additional costs because of it. So I think this is a good chance for any questions related to the forecast before we move on from here.
Yeah, John, before you go to questions, a couple comments I want to make. First question is, John, your revenue, does that factor in any of the federal funds that we have?
Thank you for saying that. At 5:03, a message came in saying the estimated amount of federal funds that we will get as the last, the latest round of CARES funding is $9.2 million. We do not assume $9.2 million in that revenue forecast, so if that is true, or I showed you 2:35, we'd be adding another nine to that number.
And then the other thing, I just want to say, I think, John, you know, since I've been here, came in 2011, we have always finished every year better than we projected, and that's a lot to do with what we do on the management side of things, and also John's department. And then I do want to make a comment, John, you assume 2.5% salary increases, but for coming up, you know, as we begin negotiations here in the future, we will have to sit down with the board and establish financial parameters, but, you know, John has to come up with some kind of number, you know, for this forecast, so he uses that 2.5, but as he said, we're not indicating to anyone that that's what the parameters that will be given to us by
Thank you, and John, you ready for questions now?
I am, please fire away.
Well, we won't fire.
I didn't hear who you called on.
Oh, sorry, Miss you.
Miss me.
Yes.
All right. On Slide 7, the historical perspective chart, which I loved the way you put that together for us, and you talked about how our actual results are somewhat better than the forecast, you know, because it's a safe forecast and we're a little more pessimistic, but wouldn't that also be because then budget cuts were put in place in response to the forecast? I mean, so it's not just that we were being pessimistic, it's that we were being proactive and made reductions in efficiencies necessary so that it wouldn't be as bad as...
That's right.
Okay, so...
Yep, you're right.
I just wanted to point out that it isn't just bad projections, it's our reaction to our projections that are making us successful in not having projections as poor as we had predicted.
Yeah, I'm glad you pointed that out, because you could look at this and just say that, you know, we do a bad job at forecasting. I don't think that's true, I think what happens is we see these forecasts, and we make decisions, and we make intentional, thoughtful decisions before we get to having a problem, because we are being responsible and don't want to run out of money, obviously.
Could you, for the benefit of our new school board members and the public, go into a little bit more detail about fund balance and what other things that might affect negatively from a financial standpoint? And it's a leading question, I'll just give you what's in my mind, which is, number one, when we had the payment delay from the state and how that saved us money because we didn't need to borrow money to pay our payroll and other expenses, and other districts got in a worse financial strait, in addition to not getting the payment from the state, they then had to pay interest on a loan, correct? And then also, the impact of a fund balance on our credit rating and how that can save us money, if you would.
Yep, thank you very much. So, yes, as you're pointing out, in the, I think it was around fiscal year 12, so when we were at the high point of our reserves, the state implemented shifts in payment, meaning they delayed money to all school districts in the state of Minnesota to save money on the state budget. They gave us an IOU saying, "We'll pay you in a future year," but for right now, then we can have a balanced budget and not owe you the money this year. Other districts had to run out to the private market, they had to contact banks, they might have had to issue other certificates of participation and borrow money. We did not, we were able to use the reserves from our own savings and make sure that we could continue to pay our bills without having to incur interest expense on a loan. The other comment you're making about bond ratings is they do look at the amount of reserves, because again, when you get to a global pandemic like we just got to, we did not have to make any drastic decisions because we knew we had a little bit of cushion there, we knew we could spend down because we had added to our reserves the last three years in a row. And that's a good sign, that means you have ability to continue to make your payments, you're not like a state like Illinois where you have to run out to markets and borrow billions of dollars and pay interest on that. And so you generally get a higher credit rating from the people, just like you and I would maybe have a higher credit score if we did better managing our money. And that saves us money when we just went to the market to borrow $180 million to build four new school buildings. So, a lot of these decisions are all intertwined and affect each other for the long run.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson. Other questions? Ms. Nathan?
So, Mr. Carlson, you talked about the situation at the state with our financing, and I know that we heard from our legislators at the AMSD legislative meeting that there was going to be a state budget deficit, and that they really felt like it could be a long legislative session, even though they're supposed to be done in May, that it might go like it has in previous years into June or beyond. We have to approve our budget by July 1st, right?
That's correct.
And we're anticipating a 1% increase. Let's say at the end, we get a 0% increase, what happens if we find out we're getting that much less revenue? What do we do at that point in the process?
So, 1%, just to put that in perspective, for a budget our size is about $2 million, two to two and a half. I would feel very comfortable based on how this year is going, where we ended last year with the amount of money, that if the state said, nope, you're not getting that two-and-a-half million dollars next year, that's not going to be the end of the world. We can, we can move forward and approve our budget. We will just be taking a little bit more out of the reserve than we thought we would. But we would not be at a position at that point of violating school board policy.
Thank you.
Dr. Garcia?
Yes, thank you. I think my questions, and forgive me because I'm obviously new at this part, but are more about sort of like creative flexibilities about how we would use the new schools as well as schools that we are or have already voted to close. So is it possible that instead of being full-blown new schools online in twenty-twenty-two for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year, that we could use those buildings for, like, say, for example, if we were still struggling with COVID and we needed overflow or if we wanted to use that space for the same amount of students but not be able to open another school? Or would we be able to use other buildings that are sort of already in existence? Because I'm also wondering about how the, how start opening a new school and closing other schools is going to impact our budget as well? And are there, I guess my question is more about like, are we able to stop or slow those processes to help us kind of have a little bit of wiggle room for the budget? So we're not having to cut things like programs or teacher salaries?
Sure, so, again, just like, I think we had discussion at the last school board meeting about being a big ship and it's kind of hard to turn a big ship fast. You know, we're kicking off boundary adjustment meetings, we had promised we'd get those a year out in advance of any boundary effects. And, and so I think what you're saying, yes, that could be a possibility that we wouldn't open them or we could use it as overflow space. But I think there's other wheels in motion that are counting on those spaces being available. And we're going to be making decisions here, hopefully by May, saying this is where you're going to go to school a year from now. So, well, yes, it could be done. It creates some difficulties probably in communicating that and how maybe reversing course. But this has been the year of making all kinds of decisions and then reversing course at times too, so.
Yeah, I would also add too that it makes it challenging when you go out to your voters and get a hundred-and-eighty million dollars approved and you say, we're opening these schools in the fall of twenty-two and then not open them. I think my experience has been down the road when you're out doing another referendum, your voters tend to say, well, you told us this back in two thousand and nineteen, but you didn't do that. So how can I trust that you'll do what you're saying now? So that, that would be a challenge to, to, you know, we, the whole pitch was these schools would open in the fall of twenty-two and if we do, wouldn't open them, I think we would have to address that issue as well.
Ms. Amundson, another question?
Director Garcia was thinking along the same lines I was. And while I do understand, you know, that we announced a certain date, I do think that our, our community with adequate communication would have some respect for the change in circumstances that might lead to a change in our decisions, especially if it saves taxpayer dollars. But my question specifically was going to be exactly how far down would enrollment need to be for us to be back, you know, at that ninety-seven percent capacity or that type of thing on our, on our schools? I know you don't have that, that information right now, but just as an example, you know, if we're down, what is it, maybe six percent, five percent of our enrollment since pre-pandemic?
That's right.
That might help us make an estimate. So I, I do think it's something we should at least think about. I, I realize though, we can't project our enrollment post-pandemic, other than to guess what we think people will do, which we have nothing to go on. Are we going to have another opportunity to ask specific questions about a potential referendum? Or would this be the time for me to bring up those questions?
I think we are going to do that in the next item. We actually have Greg from Ellers who's going to talk about kind of the mechanics of referendum. So let's maybe save that for a couple of minutes.
And in preparation for that, do we have a projected dollar amount that we would have to ask for in a referendum in order to save off all cuts? If not, you could calculate that while we're discussing.
Sure, yeah, we have not gotten to that point yet. We just wanted to be more general so far and tell you about mechanics and, and realize that we're not trying to coach you one way or another into a decision quite yet.
I had a question about cuts versus enhancements and how much larger the dollar amount would need to be for us to be able to actually offer improvements, but.
Improvements, okay.
I'll leave that for the next conversation in case you're able to come up with that.
And, Mr. Carlson, we'd like you to be doing that calculation while you're answering questions.
Okay, sounds good.
Mr. Barlow?
Thank you, just to reset in my mind. So you're offering at this point a five-year general fund financial forecast, the things to be taken into consideration you've already provided. You were not planning on offering a list of potential, what about this, what about that at this point? And so, thank you for the work that has gone into the planning. And I believe it does give us enough information to at least have awareness. Now, wasn't your intent for any decisions, well, let me back up. Are there any decisions to be made now based on your five-year general fund financial forecast?
Immediately, no. Originally, we were going to spend the month of January and early February bringing you down the path of what would you be supportive of reducing? If we had to make a major reduction? We're now recommending, especially based on the news I got at five-oh-three that said you might have nine-point-two million dollars of federal funding you weren't counting on, saying we might be able to get by this next year without having to make anything major. And so now we're, we're more leaning towards, let's talk about twenty-two dash twenty-three. We've got a year to a year and a half to plan that. So that's, and we've got a little runway here to make those types of decisions.
Sure, so then finally, last question at this point. The, the five-year forecast was really a fulfillment of function as well as preparation for the twenty-twenty-one budget, not necessarily beyond that. And the information you've provided thus far is that, in these terms loosely, we're good. Well, we're sound from a fiscal point of view in terms of twenty-twenty-one, which again is the reason we're having this special session to make preparation to go into planning for the twenty-twenty-one operating budget for Rochester Public Schools, correct?
Yes, I would say we're in a better spot than what we thought we were going to be in with a variety of things happening in the last thirty-eight minutes to the last couple of weeks, so, yes.
And then finally, I did say last thing, but finally. So for us to, how far down the road should we, aside from the forecast that you're offering, are you expecting or wanting or asking the board to project and to, for us to do our own forecasting beyond just planning preparation for the twenty-twenty-one school year?
Forecasting in terms of like what you would be comfortable with or what you would, how you would approach?
Well, I guess I'm hearing some of my colleagues, some of the concerns my, my colleagues are raising. I think go beyond, if you will, twenty-twenty-one, not to suggest that it's wrong for that, but I guess I just want to be clear in terms of what the expectation was for tonight and the time that we'll be spending moving forward. That's, that's all, thank you.
Yeah, I can, that's a good question, John, or Don. I think what John is trying to share tonight, if you remember a few meetings ago when we were talking about budgets and we were looking at substantial reductions, I think in a previous forecast that was shared. And then there was some discussion at the board level about what's the process we should use to make that large, those large reductions for next year? What we're trying to share tonight that we, there's not a need for doing that for next year based on this new federal funding and the fact that our last year finished much better than we really anticipated. But we do want to have on the table that we probably are going to have some conversation about budget reduction process for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year sometime in the future. And part of that is going to happen tonight. One option, instead of pursuing major reductions for the twenty-two, twenty-three, could be increasing our revenue through an operating referendum. So, but I guess what we're hoping to accomplish from this agenda item is we can all relax, we think we're, we're, we will be fine for next year. We're not going to have to make major reductions. We'll do like we do every year, we make reductions without, I think people aren't even aware that it happens. If you remember the year when we increased mental health, we made some reductions in some areas to pay for that increase in mental health. So we'll do things like that. The board may see or may hear in the future, there may be some reductions at site, at the sites. And that has to do with our compensatory funding because our free reduced percentage is, is lower than it's been in the past. The schools are going to see less money that they have to use on how they want to use it. So they'll probably have to make some reductions at the building level because there'll be less compensatory fund available. But, you know, the general fund, we're looking, we're saying things look fine for next year. But we still want to keep everybody's mind that we're going to have to do something for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
Ms. McLaughlin?
John, I just want to take a second to go back to the reference you made to eight-hundred-and-eleven fewer students enrolled currently. Does, do you take any further look at population growth when looking at that number? As far as forecasting, you know, the potential number of students we may have next year? I'd be interested in both the twenty-twenty-one and the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three. Do you estimate, you know, could there be a bunch more kindergartners coming in that we need to, you know, put in our schools and that that would potentially offset some of those students who have left?
Sure, good question. So we'll be giving you an enrollment projection here, probably a month down the road. But part of what you're going to see there is, well, we have birth records from, well, right up through twenty-twenty. But we look back five years and we estimate then, based on how many kids were born five years ago, that will be the kindergarten population coming in. What's hard to get our arms around in is what, what's really going to happen with growth in the city beyond that? So we know how many people or how many children were born, but we don't know how many parents are going to move here with kids that are already school age over the next few years as more jobs open up and things like that. So that's always the, the wild card and I think we tend to underestimate just a little bit because we don't know that.
And I guess just to follow up on that, do you put that then, that growth at zero? Or do you put some sort of projection to it just based on, you know, your experience and what other districts may be doing?
Yeah, so we, we look more at what do we have today? And, and what's the typical rate of growth from what we have today? So being that we're looking back at a good number of years, it probably included some growth in the community because of economics and jobs and things like that and people moving here, so it's probably baked into the formulas already. But we don't make anything special above and beyond that, like, you know, next year we'll add another hundred kids because we heard Mayo Clinic's adding another thousand jobs or something. We have not taken that aggressive of a stance when projecting enrollment ahead.
Would that also include things like any data that the city might have about new housing? You know, either multifamily housing or individual housing where those are being built and, and how many?
Yeah, in our year-to-year projections, we have not done that. We did bring in city perspective when we were, before we ran the referendum. As a facilities task force, we studied that and looked ahead to how much, or how many lots were out there ready to be developed and things like that. So we looked at that for the long haul twenty-year plan, but we don't generally look at that just in like a five-year projection.
Ms. Nathan, did you have a question you no longer want to ask?
No, I, I had it answered, thanks.
Oh, good, okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right, then, Mr. Carlson, are we ready to move on to seven-point-oh-two budget planning?
We are.
Good. And could you make it clear exactly what our goal is with this item?
So again, since this is a study session, a lot of this is just education for the board to get some information about timelines, when decisions are made, as far as some different ideas that there are out there for raising revenue and different ideas that are out there for cutting costs. Again, no decisions have been made one way or the other on either side of the equation. This is all just study and information for your consideration. We had thought that we needed to guide you towards that, making a decision by February sixteenth so that we could, you know, start the staffing process for next year. We no longer are advocating that we have to make immediate decisions on that. So this is more just information at this point.
Good, thank you for that. And I think it's always better to have information well in advance, but so we're clear. You're not looking for recommendations, you're just having a discussion about how that process will work.
That's correct.
Thank you, go ahead.
All right, I'm going to try to do this again. Let's see. Hopefully we've got the right screen showing budget planning, right? And when we get going here, I'm going to also be introducing Jody and Greg. They're going to join me about five minutes from now, but I'm going to give you some general information first. So just overall, the timeline of how budgeting works in the district, we actually started the twenty-one dash twenty-two school year budget in July of twenty-twenty. So in the finance world, we've been working on this six to seven months already. And that started with putting data into a state system called the levy information system about different estimates for costs and enrollment. We brought to you then in September, information from the Department of Education on the property tax levy. We said, here's the preliminary levy. And there were, again, a couple of things in there that needed to be adjusted. So we had you wait until early October and then once the state had the final preliminary levy, we had you approve that. Then in December, we had the truth and taxation hearing and we brought you the final levy for approval. We've also behind the scenes been working on the budget allocation document. I've attached that in board docs just for you and the public to see how we staff at our buildings. We are going to be having staffing meetings starting, I think, February nineteenth. So we meet with our principals and then we go through what they're going to be allocated based on the model that we have. And then we make final decisions with them on what positions they're going to have to displace or what positions they're going to add by the end of March. So that once we get to spring break, our principals are ready to post those positions and make those communications to employees who might be displaced at that point. Right around spring break, the finance department is busy calculating the budget. We do our first draft right around that spring break week. And then we work on it and it usually goes through about ten iterations before we actually get to a final budget to present to you in May. I think I've kind of already mentioned these, that these are key dates. You've already had input into the budget on September first, October sixth, December first, December fifteenth. Whether you knew it or not, you were taking steps for the twenty-one, twenty-two school but, school year budget at that point. We were supposed to get to this here on January fifth, our first budget planning study session. Tonight, we're on January twelfth, this was going to be the second budget planning study session. And then we were going to possibly have a third one on February ninth, although again, we're kind of leaning towards maybe that's not necessary at this point. We, again, February sixteenth, we had targeted for you to make final decisions. We, again, February 16th, we had targeted for you to make final decisions on what you wanted to do or what you'd be comfortable with as we go through the staffing process. And again, we don't think there's going to be a need for major budget reductions. So we probably don't need the February 16th decision point either. We'll talk to you about enrollment projections then. We'll bring back to you a study session with the final budget on May 25th and we'll talk about it that night again on June 1st. And then we'll want you to make a final decision on June 15th. Budgeting keeps on going after that point. It's not just setting it by June 5th. Late or early December next, at the end of 2021 here, we'll bring you budget adjustments. We'll do that again in March, June, and then we'll bring you a final audit November 15th. So you can see we started this process in July of 2020. It doesn't finish until November, December of 2022. So it's about a 30-month process for each budget year that we work on. Again, I've, I've mentioned this, but we have a standardized budget allocation document now. I think this is really made for consistency among our staffing so that, you know, if your child goes to Kellogg Middle School, if your child goes to John Adams Middle School, you're going to see staffing that looks pretty similar as far as the base level. And then principals get some extra input in there with compensatory money that the superintendent mentioned earlier. In our models, we've broken up our schools and said, there's two different kinds of elementary schools and, and really it's kind of a difference between how much admin they have based on the number of kids they have and some of those other supporting positions. But regardless, at any size elementary school, we follow the same class sizes. So it doesn't matter if your kid goes to Lincoln or if your kid goes to Gage, you're going to have class sizes that follow a school board target. You know, kindergarten is going to probably have 20 kids in a class, no matter which school building you are in our district. Unless a principal decides to use some of their compensatory money or some of their title money and make for smaller class sizes by hiring extra teachers at that level. As part of our staffing process, again, at the elementary level, we go through building by building, grade by grade. We look at the number of kids. We take the school board target for class sizes and that's the staff that we get. It's pretty cut and dry. There's not a lot of negotiation at that point. Our secondary level now, we've gotten to a pretty good formula where we've, we've kind of benchmarked ourselves against other big nine districts and other twin cities metro districts. And we say, we've looked at those to make sure that we're staffing our class sizes about average. We're not trying to be bigger than average. We're not trying to be extremely smaller than average, but we're trying to be in the ballpark of what our peers are doing. And we also verify that our secondary students don't see more than 160 students per day. That's what is in the teacher's contract. So we've got a pretty good ratio now, we think, of staffing our secondary schools. And, and really the principal at that point gets to decide, you know, they, they might be, we might tell them they have 45 FTE. And then they have to go through and figure out, okay, I need this much FIAD. I need this much English. I need this much art. You know, they might run a larger class size in art to make smaller class sizes in math. And we give our principals a little bit of flexibility on that at the secondary level. We do get to have two meetings with each of our principals so that we go through all of these decisions with the exact number of FTE. And then we look at the people too and decide who has to be displaced based on the, the contract. Other budget areas, so you know, our supporting departments, our utility budgets, we generally take what we had last year. We roll them forward and we imply or apply a inflation factor. So we might say, okay, we expect utilities to go up 3%, so we're going to add 3% in all of our utility budgets. And we just roll those forward. We consider from time to time any other strategic initiatives. So like when the school board said, we'd really like you to have more emphasis on equity, we'd like you to add another position or two there. That's what I would call a strategic initiative. That was something we didn't have. That was something we decided we should have. And we add that to the budget above and beyond what we had in the past. We also are always looking for, and the superintendent and the cabinet, we are always looking for other reductions we can make outside of the classroom. So we can shave off $100,000 out of our utility budget or our transportation budget or our supply budget. We're trying to hit those first and save some dollars so that we have the money there for the staffing, which is the most important to run a school district. All right. Any questions on the general timeline before we invite Greg and Jody to jump in with us?
Mr. Carl.
Yes. John, for the sake of perhaps our viewing audience. With standardized budget allocation, you had used on a couple of occasions, compensatory and or title money. Can you define those, please?
Yes. So compensatory revenue is a state-based aid. So it's paid by the state of Minnesota and it's determined precisely based on the number of students whose parents have applied for free or reduced price lunches. And it's done building by building. We get it in a lump sum from the state of Minnesota, but it's broken down by school and then we give that money, the majority of it to our school principals and say, here's extra funding. It's above and beyond the base that we're going to pay for out of the general fund. So now you pick which positions you want to hire with that money. Some pick social workers, some pick extra kindergarten teachers to make smaller kindergarten classes. It's really, we're giving flexibility to our sites to make those types of decisions rather than being top-down with that kind of decision-making.
Okay. And then, I'm sorry.
I think you asked, I think you asked about title too. And title is based, I believe, on census data. And that's money that's supplied to us by the federal government. And so our district receives a lump sum of money in the form of a Title I allocation. And then we have, I believe, six Title I elementary schools. And that means there's six schools within our district that have more free and reduced price lunch students than the average of our district. And so those are Title I schools. And so they get a share of that title money, federal money. And again, they can use that to buy extra staff that other schools wouldn't have.
And then also as it related to staffing process, school board target class sizes you mentioned. Again, perhaps the viewing public may not know what they are. Are you able to comment regarding that?
Yep. So kindergarten is 20 students. First grade is 24 students in a class. Second grade and third grade is up to 29 and fourth and fifth is 31. And secondary students is about 32. There's not a defined necessarily per class. It's more based on how many students a teacher can see in the day. So that's the 160 number, but generally they teach five classes. So that'd be about 32 on average.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Carlson, it looked as if you were doing that information about class sizes without using notes.
I was.
That was very impressive.
I've studied this for a long time. And actually, you know, at our younger grade levels, it's very normal sizes. When I look around at other districts, 20 kids in kindergarten is a very normal number.
What else do you? Ms. Workman.
Yes. Earlier in the presentation, the date of February 16th came up as possibly needing board approval for budget reductions. And I understand that the district's in the habit of making efficiencies wherever you can, you know, during the year. So could you give us some examples of what a, what we might have to approve as a budget reduction? As opposed to one that's just being kind of made, I don't want to say run of the mill, but you know what I mean?
Yeah, I think that, that date was built in way back when we, when we were having the conversations about, we were looking at major reductions for next school year. And that date was more to, to settle on, I would, I would call it on areas like class size would be one or look at expanding the radius for transportation qualification. But like I said, that date was in place when we thought we were going to have to look at major reductions and we would need those, you know, kind of parameters before we would, you know, really work out the final details of the, of the budget. But now that we're, it's, it's looking better than what we thought a few months ago. We're thinking that we probably wouldn't need that meeting for that purpose.
Okay. I, I kind of thought maybe that's what it was, but I thought I'd better ask the question just in case. So thank you for that.
Ms. McLaughlin.
John, just a quick follow-up to my written question. I appreciate your answers to that. But one of the questions I had had was about what a success coach is and your definition was helpful. Thank you. I guess the reason I asked it though is I'm not seeing that in any of the budget allocations for the different types of schools. Am I missing something or is, can you help me understand that?
Yep, you're not missing that. So a success coach is a perfect example of sites that have compensatory money and they're able to buy that. And so most of those positions are funded through compensatory title. They're not part of the base allocation. So a principal's made a definite decision that that's a priority at their building.
And are those generally like a 1.0 FTE or some percentage?
I think that would be common because they're, they're certified teachers, but I, I believe we have some that are less than that. I was just trying to look at the list here. You know, Sentry has 1.5, so I'm guessing they have a 1.0 and a 0.5 person unless they have a 0.8 and a 0.7 or something like that, but.
Got it. That's really helpful to understand the funding for that. Thank you.
Any other questions for John? So, Mr. Carlson, you have guests.
Okay. I am going to invite Greg Crowe and Jody Zesba from Ellers to join me now and talk to you about the mechanics of operating and capital project levies and how you would do that or when you would do that or why you would do that. We're not advocating for or against right now. We're just wanting to give you information on what you would need to be thinking about if you wanted to do that. So Greg and Jody, I don't know who's taking it away first, but I'll run the screen here for you.
Thanks, John. I'm going to start out. Good evening, everyone. So this is very timely information. We're doing this kind of discussion with a number of board members right now as you're starting to look toward your budgeting for, for the future. So just a couple of voter-approved tools that you have available to you. The first one that we're going to start to talk about is the operating referendum. And this will be a little more familiar to you because you do have a voter-approved operating referendum in place. So the first thing that we wanted to do is just cover a little bit of background information about an operating referendum. So it does require that you present a question to your voters via an election and allows you to generate additional general education revenue. Within the formula for the operating referendum, there is revenue provided through a combination of local property tax levies and state aid. You do access the property tax portion on an annual basis. There's no debt issued, but it's an annual levy. That's part of the levy process that John discussed with you earlier. The allowable uses for this revenue is pretty wide open. So you can use your operating referendum dollars for any operating or capital expenses. Most districts use it for their day-to-day operations, salaries, benefits, utility supplies, technology, all of those kinds of things. Years ago, this used to be referred to as an excess levy and districts literally used it for additional programming that they like to have in place. But now virtually all districts have operating referendums in place and use it to supplement their, their day-to-day regular instructional costs. So a couple other pieces of background information, you can have a fixed dollar amount that your voters approved or you can have it subject to annual inflationary adjustments. And we frequently get asked, well, who gets to decide what the inflation adjustment is? And that is determined by the state. So you don't get to decide what you think inflation is or what it might be looking like in your district. It is a state-determined adjustment. Again, the operating referendum can't be any longer than 10 years. And there is a cap on the allowance and that is adjusted annually for inflation currently for fiscal year 22. So the upcoming year, the revenue is about $1,828 per pupil. And because they update that inflation amount on an annual basis, that estimate will be changing this summer and they'll recalculate the allowance for fiscal year 22. There are some districts that don't have a cap on their referendum allowance. So there are some smaller districts which qualify for sparsity revenue and they have allowances that are at the 3,000 and above level. So if you happen to see some districts that have a very large operating referendum, it's likely that they're a sparsity district because they do not have a cap. Some districts also have a grandfathered limit. There's lots of grandfathers in different legislative, different statutory provisions, and this is one that does have a grandfathered limit. So that is another reason why a district might have in voter-approved authority above that statewide cap. So Rochester's operating referendum authority was approved by the voters in 2015 and it is currently at a level of about $781 for fiscal year 22. There have been some changes in legislation for operating referendum over the years. So after some conversions and local optional revenue adjustments and as that inflationary factor has been updated, that is where you currently stand for the upcoming fiscal year. You do have the inflation adjustment based upon that statutory amount and the revenue is in place through fiscal year 26. So this would, if you simply wanted to renew your operating referendum authority at any point in time, you would need to have an election in either the fall of '23 or '24. You're allowed to request the authority from your voters one year early with a year delay in the effective date just so that you have that money secured and you can do some better budget planning. But the final year that you would need to present a question to the voters to ensure that you don't lose out on the revenue would be November of 2024. Your revenue for the current fiscal year is at about $15 million. So this does provide a significant amount of dollars for Rochester schools. Few other pieces of information, you can only hold one operating referendum election per year and it is required that you vote on general election day in November unless you want to hold the election by mail ballot. And again, the election can be held one or two years prior to the initial tax year. So 2021 election is rev, if you had an election, this, if you were having an election in the fall of 2021, the earliest you would get that revenue is for fiscal year 23. So the way that it works is that if the voters approve referendum authority in November of 2021, it's included on your levy for calendar year 22 and provides revenue to the district for fiscal year 22, 23. You are required to send a notice by mail to all taxpayers prior to the election and that is specific to an operating referendum election only. There are two different tax bases that your levies are spread on. And most of your levies are spread on something different than what we're showing here, net tax capacity value. We'll talk about that in a minute. But operating referendum levies are spread on referendum market value. It's pretty unique to operating referendum. There's a couple of other categories that have levies spread on referendum market value. But in the referendum market value tax base, seasonal recreational properties are excluded and agricultural land and buildings are excluded for the most part. They do get levied on their house, garage and one acre. So the tax base is very different and the way that it's, the taxes are spread are different. The result is that most property tax types pay about the same amount per dollar of market value. So if you own a $100,000 home, you pay the same as a $100,000 business. You pay the same as if you own a $100,000 apartment property. You can qualify for state equalization aid as we mentioned, and that amount varies depending upon your referendum market value dollar on a per pupil basis. Currently Rochester doesn't qualify for any aid. You used to, and now all of that aid is associated with your local optional revenue category. So right now, any voter-approved operating referendum is collected entirely by property tax levy. A couple pieces of information on trends. So operating referendum authority over time has been increasing. Years ago, the operating referendum authority was a much smaller part of school district budgets at about $332. For the upcoming year, the average is 859 or about 13% of the basic formula allowance. So it's a pretty substantial source of revenue for districts throughout the state. Here is the reason why we are having these discussions with many school districts and school boards right now. So that top blue line shows the general education formula allowance, which provides the most significant portion of your funding for day-to-day operations. So this allowance, had it increased by inflation, would be at the level shown on the blue line. So this allowance, had it increased by inflation, would be at the level shown on the blue line. The actual formula allowance is shown on the dotted orange line. You'll see that the gap for fiscal year '21, the current year, per pupil, between the inflation-adjusted and where it's actually at is $503 per pupil. So had the formula allowance increased by the pace of inflation, most districts wouldn't be talking about even the possibility of asking their voters for additional funding. This just gives you a sense for how your referendum authority per pupil compares to districts of similar size, similar makeup, socioeconomic makeup, that sort of thing. So Rochester at 776. You can see Elk River is listed, Osseo is listed, South Washington County Schools, and Robbinsdale. And Rochester is quite a bit lower than each of these comparative districts, just to give you a sense for where your referendum authority is at. In terms of the total referendum revenue that the districts are accessing for their students, you can see what that is for the current fiscal year. So the average allowance of these comparative districts is about $1,500. And for Rochester, that would mean an additional $14 million of revenue. Even going to the state average allowance that we just mentioned would add about $1.5 million of revenue for Rochester. Increasing to the cap, which would be another $20.5 million. So we just kind of wanted to give you that context for some comparative districts, the state average, and going to the cap, just so you kind of have a sense for where you stand and what that range could be or might look like at those levels.
I'm just going to interrupt because this was a question by Director Amundson earlier. So the gap we're expecting in '23 is 13.3 million. And so what Jody is saying here is if we were average of our peer group, we'd have 14 million. So in other words, we wouldn't be projecting a deficit. We'd be even in our projection in '23 at the average.
Any questions about the operating referendum? Otherwise, we have another tool we'll walk through, which is a capital project levy. It's a similar source of funding in that it's an annual levy like an operating referendum is. But it's-- there are a couple of differences related to uses and tax base. So we'll kind of walk through a similar kind of background related to capital project levies. In most cases, school districts are using them to finance technology, but really, just about anything that you fund out of your operating capital account can be financed with a capital project levy, including technology staff, equipment, curriculum, capital maintenance, things like that. Similar to an operating referendum, they are voter-approved and can be up to 10 years. And it does give you additional levy authority to raise funds for these kind of costs and is an annual contribution of revenue for the school district. The difference is relative to the operating referendum. You know, we talk about $1,500 per pupil or $780 per pupil. The capital project levy is actually levied as a tax rate, and that's what's approved on the ballot. So a 1% tax rate or a 5% tax rate versus a per-pupil allowance. And one implication to that is if your tax base is growing, your revenue will grow from year to year. So you end up generating more revenue if your tax base grows. Conversely, if your tax base shrinks, you could end up with less revenue in one year than you had at the beginning or in the previous year. Another difference is it's not capped like an operating referendum. There is no maximum. It's basically you levy as much as your voters will approve, and there is no state equalization aid. So regardless of what happens with your tax base, you would not qualify for aid on a capital project levy. But as we noted earlier, you don't qualify currently on an operating referendum. So it's a difference, but it's not an effective difference for you. The other difference is, in addition to the November Election Day, you can vote on any approved election day for school districts, which are the second Tuesdays of February, April, May, and August. So you have a little bit more flexibility on the capital project levy in terms of when you vote. It doesn't-- voting earlier in a calendar year, however, does not give you revenue any sooner. So as Jody mentioned, if you vote in November of 2021, it would go on the pay 22 levy and be revenue for fiscal year '22, '23. So if you voted next month-- well, you don't have time to call for an election-- but if you voted in February of this year, it would still be added to the 2022 levy for fiscal '23, since obviously you've already certified your levy for '21. So same timing on revenue regardless of when you vote. So we put together some tax impacts just for you to think about and just to kind of have a sense of where things are at. And we have a range of 1.5 to $3 million of annual revenue. And if you look at that $200,000 home, the tax impact is basically directly proportional. So the 1.5 million dollar home is $13 a year. The $3 million home is about $27 a year, a little bit of rounding there. But generally, a proportional tax impact. Now, because it's on net tax capacity, in this case, it would go toward your ag land and your cabins, which you don't have much of, but it also skews a little bit toward commercial property. So if you compare that $200,000 business, the tax impact is about 80% higher than on an operating referendum. And so $24 versus 13 on the 1.5 million dollar option. And that's just how all your NTC taxes work, because you-- the classification rates kind of direct those NTC taxes more toward commercial and away from residential and ag land. And just to give you a sense of what your tax base looks like, we did put a table on the next slide that shows your market value, which is kind of when you ask someone, what's your home worth? That's the market value. For any-- typically, everything that qualifies for an operating referendum lands in that referendum market value column at the same rate. So that middle set of columns, you have 57% of your homes-- or of your market value is homestead, and 59% of your referendum market value is homestead. And as you see at the bottom, the ag and very little of the seasonal rockets, anything qualified as resorts lands in referendum market value. But then when you look at NTC, because of those classification rates and including agricultural and seasonal recreational land, the percentage of the tax that's paid by homeowners is only 47% compared to the 59 for the operating referendum. And so as you're thinking about, okay, how much do we need to raise? 3 million, 5 million, whatever it is, 15 million? Your homeowners will typically would pay less on a capital project levy than they would on an operating referendum. And you could also have a mix of both, which many of the districts that we work with do. So just a little bit of background that kind of helps-- helps you think about the impact of the tax itself on the different tax bases. The next slide just kind of details everything that we just walked through. And the note on the capital project levy, the last line is that the classification rates typically will shift the burden from homes to businesses for a capital project levy. So then we have a comparison here that just directly shows on that $200,000 home. If you were raising $3 million, what would be the difference in the tax impact between the types of the levy? And in the capital project levy, it's $27 a year. The operating referendum is $35 a year. So in the case of that home, it's slightly less expensive for that homeowner, about $8 a year, to raise the same amount of revenue on a capital project levy versus an operating referendum. And if you're in a business, it reverses. We don't have a 200,000 down there, but on the 250, it goes-- it's $62 a year on a capital project levy and 44 on an operating referendum. So business owners pick up more of the tax because of that-- because of the different tax base that it's levying on. The next slide, we just have a timeline. They're pretty similar. And obviously, if you move ahead with an election, your election attorney will prepare a timeline that's much more detailed, like they did during the bond election. But really, the first deadline is August 20th. That's when you have to adopt your resolution calling for a special election, if it's in-- if the election would be in November. And that's also the day that the counties and the Department of Ed have to be notified of the fact that you are holding an election. And then absentee ballots is September 17th. And then subsequent to that, you have to send a required notice to each taxpayer over the next month, sometime in the next month. And that's only required with an operating referendum. Basically telling them the tax impact, giving a table like the ones we showed above that says how much the tax impact is on a variety of property types or variety of values with an operating referendum. So not required for a capital project levy. One additional requirement on a capital project levy is if it's not used only for technology. In other words, if you plan to do some roofs or buy some buses, you have-- and it's over $2 million, you have to submit a review and comment to the Department of Education, just as if you were doing a bond referendum. And that typically happens-- that would be required in early August and then publication of it in September or October. It's much simpler than a bond referendum review and comment, however. So not really a reason to limit yourself to technology, but it is required if you're not-- if you're only using it for technology, you wouldn't have to submit that review and comment. So then Election Day would be November 2nd on this timeline.
I am going to-- just tell you about tax impacts and overall what our district homeowners pay on a $200,000 home compared to some of our peers. So we saw this in the Truth in Taxation presentation that of the other large districts in the state were the lowest. Our homeowners pay $769, whereas if you lived in Woodbury, same-priced home, you'd pay $1,265 on that home. Locally, Zambroda Mizepa has the highest taxing rate, and we're near the bottom of all of the local districts around us. And then Director Amundson asked me the other week was to compare in the Big Nine. So in the slightly larger districts here in southern Minnesota, again, only Red Wing and Farbo would be paying less property tax home than a resident in Rochester. So all the other Big Nine districts are-- homeowners are paying a little bit more. So this would be a good time, then, to ask any questions of Greg or Jody.
Ms. Amundson.
For the benefit, again, of the viewing public, there was the slide about inflation and how the amount that we're getting from the legislature has not kept up with inflation. And I think I noticed that that was calculated on CPI. Yeah, there it is at the top. Are you familiar with the calculation of using the implicit price deflator? And how much greater of a gap that would show if you graphed it? And why that might be more relevant to school districts? And if so, could you comment on that? Again, just for the benefit of those who may not be familiar with how this could look even worse than that chart right there?
Yeah, there's a measure of cost increases called-- and there's the implicit price deflator. We don't need to get into the math behind it, but it basically does a cost for certain buckets. And there is an implicit price deflator for state and local government services. And the CPI is obviously Consumer Price Index. So it compares inflation based on a basket of goods and services that a consumer would purchase. The implicit price deflator is a-- is basically what state and-- the four state and local governments is what state and local governments are purchasing. And it is more highly weighted towards salary costs, because that's most of what state and local governments pay for and what you're familiar with in your budget. And those costs have risen at a higher rate than consumer products. And I was in the legislature for about 20 years before I joined Ellers eight years ago, and we had a lot of really long debates about the value of the CPI versus the implicit price deflator. We could run this chart with the implicit price deflator, but to be consistent with the decision the legislature made to use the Consumer Price Index to adjust the-- to adjust the inflation amount on the operating referendum, we've used this measure. But you're correct. If we use the implicit price deflator for state and local government services, the gap would be much larger, and it would more accurately reflect the costs that a school district sees because of, you know, being skewed more towards salaries and less toward those consumer products. And so it's an important distinction, and maybe we should add a third line. That might be kind of interesting, just to see, you know, here's how costs have increased for schools. And, you know, one of the biggest arguments against using is that it becomes-- people would say, well, it becomes circular. So if you provide more because salaries are going up, it's going to go to salaries, and that's going to drive that implicit price deflator higher and higher. I don't know if anybody uses it, and, you know, if the subsection of populate-- or, you know, if schools in Minnesota had something based on that, I don't know that would necessarily skew that in a way that would drive it up nationally. But anyway, it's an interesting debate if you, you know, kind of get into what's driving costs. But I think they always landed on what's easiest, and that's the CPI. So-- and the CPI is actually specified in the statute, so.
I love the idea of a third line, though, just for educational purposes.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's actually not a bad idea to have a version with that. And I want to say goodbye for Jody. She's-- we've actually got another meeting that she's going to jump off for at 6:30. It seems like-- the good thing about virtual meetings is we don't have to commute between meetings, but then we're overscheduled and we're going every direction.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you, Jody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jody. Ms. Nathan.
So I guess I'd like a little clarification on how operating referendums work together. So since we already have a referendum where it looks like we have '23 or '24, where we'd have to bring it back for renewal, if we were to choose to do an additional operating referendum before that, how do those things play together?
Yeah, so that is a-- that's an interesting discussion that you'll need to have, because-- so you have-- have to have that election in '23 or '24. You would have two options. One, you can just layer on top. So right now, you're at about $7-- or about $800, let's say. If you wanted another $800, you could have an $800 and have it go for 10 years, have your vote in '23 or '24, and then 10 years from now, you'd have to have another renewal vote. So they would just be staggered, and you would be voting a little bit more frequently than once every 10 years. The other alternative that some districts do, depending on how close they are to that final year, is you can do what's called a revoke and replace. So you could, this fall, vote on a ballot question that revoked your $800 and replace it with the total that you want, whether that's 1,000 or 1,500 or 1,600, whatever it is. And then that would last 10 years, and you would only have one year of renewals. The downside is you lose your-- you lose three or four years of revenue. I mean, you don't lose it because you'd replace it. But when the voters originally, you know, approved a 10-year issue or a 10-year term, you'd only be really have been collecting it for six or six years or so. So, I mean, you're kind of right at the cusp where, you know, it's a-- it's probably close enough to the expiration where it might not be a bad plan. Part of it-- part of it depends on whether you want to be, you know, with the 2019 vote, then a 2021 vote, then a 2023 vote. You may want to do it so that you don't have to have that third election and have some voter fatigue because of, you know, having three elections over the course of five or six years. So that-- you should-- So that you should, you should discuss it. I don't think there's a absolute right answer, but it should be a discussion you have about how your community might receive another vote. Because you don't want to lose what you have now if you have to vote on a renewal of twenty-three or twenty-three or twenty-four. And I should clarify that revoke and replace, if it fails, it doesn't revoke what you have. It only revokes it if it's successful and you can, and you can have a higher number. That's a question to get sometimes. Is there any risk of losing it if you put that on the ballot and there's not?
Other questions, board members? Ms. Workman.
Yes, this question is directed for Mr. Carlson Mark. Did we have a similar situation to that in twenty fifteen or not? Were we running out of a referendum at the same time we were starting a new one? I, I've, I've been through so many of these in this district, they kind of all run together.
Let me look that up. I believe we did a revoke and replace at that point. We had a very small one and then we got it up to the average at that point.
Okay, that's, that was kind of what I remembered.
You're right, Julie. That's what we did.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Other questions? Ms. Amundson, you have another question.
Yep, before I get into it. Are we going to have further discussion or is this it right now? Is this just questions on the presentation we just saw? Because I don't want to take up any more time if you have to get to another meeting.
Yeah, this, this information was not intended for the board to make a decision on doing a referendum or not. It was more just to give you some basic information.
Yep, and, and I just have some input that's time sensitive. So like I said, I didn't want to waste the time of our professionals before.
Oh, I'm, I'm fine. I, Jody had to go cover the other meeting, but I can be here till midnight if you need me.
Well, it, it doesn't have to be extensive. I just wanted to point out to, to people when considering the timeline that yes, we may not need to vote as a board on whether to end the amounts until much later in this year. But there are some preparation items that would need significant lead time. One being, you know, like a tax tolerance type of survey. And if that is something that we were considering whether or not to do a referendum, that, that survey would be, I think, critically important because of the change in both economic situation as well as perceived satisfaction and enrollment in the district. I think we're, the sands are shifting under us at such a very rapid rate that before we can even discuss whether or not a referendum would be advisable and move towards it, I personally would advocate for having that, that type of question answered before we even have that discussion. So I would advocate for having a survey sooner rather than later. And in addition, I think it's an excellent time when doing a tax tolerance survey to also include some items on that survey that would address some more general questions about public perception of the district. Anywhere from, you know, how are we doing so far? You know, do you, do you have a good confidence level in your, in your school district? But also, I think that there's some potential for us, perhaps, like I alluded to before. I don't know how scary of a number it would be to our public to have something that would just stave off our budget reductions. Or whether there might be room for an additional question that would allow us some enhancements. Because I often hear in my referendum efforts of the past, I hear from the community, they say, you know, well, don't just threaten us with, with cuts if this doesn't pass. Tell us what else that we're going to get. And I think it can be a selling point if we were able to promise something that the, the community has been longing for, for their local school district to offer. In which case, I think it might be useful to include some questions. And, and we have done that in the not-so-distant past. As one of the, the people involved in past referendum efforts, I have a two thousand and six survey where they did that type of thing. You know, if you knew this, if you knew that the district was going to be able to offer X or Y or Z, would you be more likely or less likely to support the referendum? Similarly, if you knew that the district was going to have to cut X or Y or Z, would you be more likely or less likely to support the referendum? And, and that opportunity for us not only to fine tune the referendum question to what, what we think the, the public has an appetite for, it also gives us some valuable feedback on how we're serving our district at the same time. So all of that is to say, I don't think now is too early for us to be talking about getting that survey out there because it will inform future discussions and then it will be too late if we have the discussion, we say, oh, if only we had a survey because that takes a significant lead time to arrange. So that's why I'm taking this opportunity to address that issue, even though I haven't been asked. Thank you.
Ms. Amundson, Mr. Barlow.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Ellers. I'm curious, does your company offer recommendations as to when or strategic considerations to be undertaken? Or do you simply provide information as you have this evening? Or with that information, do you perhaps suggest, based on you have some familiarity with Rochester Public Schools? And the issues that are before us and the forecast that it's not too far in the distance? Do you offer suggestions or anything specific beyond what you have this evening?
Yeah, I mean, we can get into different things like election timing. You know, a lot of our expertise is because we do fifty or sixty of these elections every year. But when it comes to setting the size, you know, that's really Mr. Carlson's wheelhouse. And we'll certainly work with him if he has questions about what other people do. But, you know, he, he just showed you the fund balance predictions and, you know, it's, you know that if you try and fill the twenty-three hole, you're not likely to have enough money in five years to, to, you know, as your costs continue to rise and, and, and to, to make sure you're filling the bucket. And so, you know, I think that his forecast models are great and, and well beyond what a lot of districts have. But that's really what you should inform yourselves on how much based on is his recommendations on, you know, where, where you anticipate that, that hole to be. And, and we're certainly happy to, to talk to you and run, run numbers and work with a survey company. If you go that direction, give you a sense of where your needs might balance with your public's willingness to pay.
And the forty or plus districts you're currently working with, are any of them utilizing surveys? And or are they simply potentially looking at the projected deficits?
I'd say, I'd say it's probably about sixty, forty, forty percent utilizing surveys. And a lot of it is, you know, smaller districts don't necessarily have the resources to survey as frequently. But sometimes those are the ones that don't pass then. We've got a couple of districts that have gone through two failed elections over the last two years, trying to find that number. And now they've decided, you know, it might be just worth, worth our effort to engage a survey company and, and try and work through it from that direction instead. And a lot of times, you know, it comes down to resources for them. So I'd say the majority of the districts your size are definitely using surveys and not just for tax tolerance, but some of those other questions about the district and, and other future plans.
Thank you, Greg.
Ms. Nathan.
So I guess this is a little bit of history from Mr. Carlson. So I, I think in both the twenty fifteen operating and the twenty nineteen capital referendum, we had cert, we had community surveys for both of those. And as I remember, there was, I remember a February timeline where we were approving survey questions or the survey was going out. And I see on your budgeting timeline that you have two dates in February that you thought we might need to use for budget cuts for next year that we might not need to use this year. Is it possible to allocate time at one of those meetings to have this conversation?
I think that's the will of those who set the agenda, but yes, we could do a referendum deep dive if that's the will of the board.
Is that the right timing, though?
Yeah, I, I think so because as Greg pointed out, August is, goes, you know, the time between now and August goes really fast when we start talking about processes and getting ready for that, to make that decision.
And I know that since we've all, a few of us have all been through referendums together. We also know there's that time to have a community committee organize itself so that they can reach out to the community and, and do their work as well.
Yep, makes sense.
All right, thanks.
Sorry, I was talking into a abyss. Any more questions or comments? I see none. Mr. Carlson.
Okay, then we're good with Greg, probably. And then I had a few more things to talk to you about on the cost side or the expenditure side, just to give you some comparative data on that, since we talked about revenue so far.
Well, thank you all for, for taking the time and appreciate the good questions and the good discussion. Have a great rest of your night.
Thank you.
All right, I'm just trying to get back to where I was. All right, so I wanted to talk to you now about expenses. And so on these, all of the things I'm going to show you next, we were specifically looking at a slightly larger group of peers. Basically districts that had more than ten thousand students up to, I think it was twenty-five thousand was our top end number. These districts are primarily in the metro area, but you've got Rochester, you know, as an outlier down here. And you've got Saint Cloud as an outlier up in the Northwest. All right, so on this, this is just showing you where the money comes from. I think we've talked about this plenty of times, but obviously we know that most of our money comes from the state. Sixty-eight percent of our budget is from the state sources and twenty-two percent is from the local sources, which, which the highest part of the local source, obviously, is the property tax. We certainly cannot set a budget based on just what we charge to get into a football game. There's not enough revenue there to, to fund the district that way. In our spending, we break things down by programs. That's one way we can slice the data. And so obviously what we're looking for when we do this is, are we high in kind of those support areas or? Or not, or how do we compare in that? We want to make sure that we're putting most of our money towards the red, the gray and the brown so that that's showing that we're spending the majority of the funds in the general fund on instruction. So the other pieces of the pie are different supports that are built around instruction. We also can slice the data by the object of expenditure. So that means what are you spending it on? And salaries and benefits, as we've referenced, are the biggest piece of the pie there. It's about right around eighty percent of the budget goes to paying people. This kind of just reiterates what I was talking about during the forecast, the green line being the revenue. So for, we were tracking back there where most of the time the revenue was just slightly ahead of the expenditures. And then it dipped the other way where the revenue was below the expenditures. And then in this last three-year period, the revenues again have been slightly above the expenditure, which has helped us save up and be ready for an unexpected pandemic. As far as how does what we're spending or how much that we have in reserve compared to our peer groups, so of these districts that we're talking about, we're basically right in the middle. This is all fund balance. So before I was talking to you about the unassigned fund balance and unassigned is really the marker of where you have flexibility. The other buckets within the fund balance are restricted for different types of uses. And so this is the one, this is just looking at all fund balance, but we are right slightly above the average of our peer group. When it comes to operating expenditures, we're spending near the bottom of our peer group. And that's probably, again, a reflection of we have a very low operating referendum. So we have less revenue coming in. It would make sense that we have less money per student to spend. So we're at that fourteen thousand two ninety-one in fiscal year nineteen. And I should just point out that this data, because it's coming from an aggregated source, it's, it runs a year behind. They're just about ready to release the twenty twenty data, but it wasn't ready as we were preparing for this conversation. So this is the school year of eighteen dash nineteen for all of these comparisons. As far as salaries and benefits, when I said we spend right around eighty percent of our budget, we are actually slightly below average and near the bottom of our peer group. So, for example, Robbinsdale at the top is spending nearly, looks like ninety percent of their budget on staffing costs, which that might mean they run their own school buses, so they own their own school buses, so they're paying their drivers. That's one little nuance in here that could be making them higher. But I know Izzata, I believe Izzata is contracting with the same company we do. So, and yet they're still approaching that ninety percent marker as well. That just means they have a lot or less flexibility to buy other things when nearly your entire budget goes to staffing. When it comes to spending, our teacher salary compared to our peer group is very close to this, to the average of this group. The average is sixty-four thousand one eighty, but in Rochester it's sixty-two thousand eight thirty-seven. So I wouldn't say we're uncompetitive because there are other districts within our peer group that have an average teacher salary less than Rochester. But there's districts on the other side of that, too. On our principal salaries, we're slightly less competitive. There's a larger gap here between the average and where we are. But we're almost in the same position as far as the ranking goes when it comes to the average salary for a principal in our district. This chart is pretty telling to me. This, this one is showing that since twenty-ten, if you use that as the base of staffing versus the number of students, in the last ten years, our student count has grown by about eleven percent, but the number of employees in the district has grown by about thirty-one percent. So we're adding more staff than we are students or at a faster rate of growth. And I really think that's because we've put a lot more emphasis on adding other supporting positions like counselors and social workers and so on and so forth. So we've been able to, after we got out of severe budget cutting time in that two thousand nine, two thousand ten era, we have been able to, over time, slowly add back some of those things that might have been cut in the past. On this chart, this shows where the district ranks in terms of staff, licensed staff compared to students. And you want to be the furthest to the right on this chart. So this is saying that overall, we have the third best staffing ratio of all of our peers. So in other words, we would have more adults per student in our buildings than most of our peers. And this data comes from information we report to the Department of Education, just like it comes from other districts as well. just like it comes from other districts as well. Just looking at the trend, we know that in that last graph, we were at 14.8. So it's, when it's going down, that means it's improving. So it was actually even slightly better in the 2016-2017. But that was the year I told you when we were doing the forecast, was when we were still spending more than what we were bringing in revenue. So one way we address that is by making some reductions for 17, 18. So you can see we have less FTE in the 17, 18 year than we did in the 16, 17 year. So that made our, our staffing ratio go up a little bit. But as you saw, we're still very competitive and very well-staffed compared to our peers. This slices the data just a little bit different and looks towards guidance counselors, nurses, psychologists and social workers. We're not, you know, we moved one spot over to the left, but we're still staffed much better than average. The average district has 220 kids per each, per, per this group of positions. And we have 186 students per each of those positions. And we would argue that we're probably still not where we need to be, but compared relatively to our peer group, we are doing better. And that has been improving and that's been steadily getting better year over year. We've been increasing our, our FTE. So we went from 73 in this category in 2015 up to 96. And if we had the data for 20 and 21, it'd be even higher than the 96. This graph might be just slightly hard to read, but what we're trying to show here was just if you look across our elementary school buildings to see kind of what the staffing ratio to student ratio, how it sorts out, it's basically what I expected it to be. Our, our schools that we have more funding available through the compensatory and the title programs like Riverside and Gage have better staffing ratios. So if you had your kids in those schools, you're going to see more adults than you would in a Gibbs or a Washington or a Pinewood. That's just how it sorts out because we have extra funding available towards those buildings. There is just a little anomaly here. This was the year we opened up the Hoover Early Learning School and we think some data might have gotten misreported. Some of the early learnings teachers might have gotten mixed in here. So Hoover is showing like it was the best staffed elementary school, but we think that there's a little goof up in the data there. And then lastly, this is very hard to read and so I don't want you to, to get too focused on it, but I asked for the software to give me like the top four areas where if we were needing to cut the budget, where would we, where are we most out of line compared to our peer group? And it came back with four different areas of expenditure. The first one was licensed instructional support personnel, object number 143. That means those are teachers like instructional coaches or reading and math support teachers. Those teachers are not what we would have classified as licensed instructional teachers. Those teachers that you think are standing at the front of the room, if you will. These are the supporting teachers. And so according to this data in our peer group, we staff generously, probably, as a way to put it, compared to our peers. And so that would be one area we could look at if we were thinking we needed to reduce. We would maybe look at that. Another area is in substitute teacher salaries. We're, we're high on that compared to our peer group. And as there's talking about this with our cabinet last week, we could probably come up with six different reasons why that might be. It might be we have a very generous contract where we give time off. It could be we have a lot of professional development occurring during the day, so we need more subs. It could be we have an absenteeism problem. It could be, you know, a whole variety of reasons. It could be we're, we're paying better wages than what our peers are paying for substitute teachers. So you'd really, I would caution and just say, before we would go into any of these, we'd have to fully understand what the situation is. And again, I'm just showing these as, these are examples that the software picked out that these are areas we could, we could potentially look at because they're higher, much higher than what our peer average would be. So I don't want to make any assumptions that we're making any automatic adjustments just because this report kicked that out to us. A third category was dental insurance. And we've already known that and we've already started that to address that. And I expect that number to come down over time. We've put in maximum rates, we're going to pay for dental insurance into all of our bargain contracts now. So I think over time, our amount of dental insurance will fall off this report and it won't be an outlier anymore. And then lastly, this one was surprising to me, is communication services. So it's telephone lines and internet lines were showing up as an outlier. And we think that's possibly because we have our own fiber network across town. And the lease on that is coming up in 2022. And then the payments are going to go down about 20 to 30% on that. And so that's probably going to naturally resolve itself without us even having to do anything intentional on that. That once that network has been mostly paid off from the initial construction, we should be more in line. So I'm going to stop there. That was all I wanted to show you. That was just again, to provide some suggestions, some commentary, some things to look at if we were thinking we needed to go down the path of budget reductions, which again, now we are feeling we don't need to go down that path immediately.
Ms. Nathan?
Mr. Carlson, so not for this year, you are correct. We don't have to go through that path. And if I haven't said it to you already, I'm thrilled. But if, if we were to look at, for example, what the, what the software kicked out, you know, the licensed instructional support personnel have jobs and roles. They, they do things in the district. So we wouldn't just be looking at, at what cost savings. We'd have to look at what those jobs were and what those responsibilities were and see who would do them, right?
Absolutely, that was, that would be something that would go away. So a lot of that is embedded professional development, you know, teachers providing coaching to other teachers. We'd have to figure out a different way than providing professional development instead of doing it through the instructional coaching method, for example.
So it's, I, I guess my, my point isn't, it's not just dollars and cents, but it's also,
That's right.
It's also the roles and the jobs. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Any other questions for Mr. Carlson? Seeing none, I think this was very informative. We appreciate the work you've done and the education that you've provided for the board. Mr. Carlson, do you have any last words? I mean, not like you're going to be speaker, but you know what I mean, concluding, yeah.
No, I'm good in that. Yeah, I think we would need some direction if you want us to go more down the referendum path. I think we need to know that so we can start preparing what kind of conversation we should have on February 9th then.
And do you want that recommendation or not now or?
I don't know that we need that. And if, if, if the superintendent or the executive committee wanted to talk about that and, and give me direction, that's fine, too.
It's my way of thinking that would, that would absolutely work, so appreciate that. All right, again, we thank you for that. We're going to adjourn in just a minute and reminder to stay on this link for our next meeting. And before we adjourn and then reconvene for our next meeting, are we thinking we want a five-minute break or do you want to just power through?
Break?
I agree.
Break, okay.
Break, please.
Then we will, I will adjourn in just a minute and we will reconvene. Is five minutes enough, 10 minutes?
Well, we're doing such a fine job in moving along. Give us the opportunity to really reset and refresh. I'd suggest 10.
Okay, all right, then we will reconvene at 7 o'clock after we adjourn. This, what, sorry, at 7, we will reconvene at 7:10, which would give us 10 minutes, sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, and we are adjourned at 7:00 PM.